One of these is blank.
Chair has a microphone in front of her, too. Are we all ready?
Yes.
I call this meeting the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. Ms. Serzak, can you take the role, please?
Dr. Beers?
Here.
Ms. Cook?
Here.
Ms. Hummel?
Here.
Ms. Minor?
Here.
Mrs. Taylor?
Here.
Mrs. Young?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here. Thank you. 3.01 certification closed session. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I certify to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board while in closed session discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Serzak?
Ms. Minor?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you. 5.01 announcements superintendent's report. Dr. Constantino? Oh, my sorry. I already marked that through, but I don't have to do that anymore. Can I get a motion for approval of the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the agenda, item 4.01, as presented.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Cook, for that. Any discussion?
How do you make an amendment?
Okay, I'd like to make an amendment.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to move action item 7.01, WJCC Resolution approving county bond financing for school project to right before the bid for the partial demolition of James Blair Middle School.
7.01 is an action item and the demolition is a discussion.
I understand that. I'd like to move to a discussion item, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving seconded to move 7.01 to a discussion item? Any discussion? Ms. Cook?
I have a question. So if we vote aye, that means that we would be not taking action on that this evening. If we vote nay, then that means that agenda would, if passes, would stand as?
That is correct.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Ms. Serzak, could you take the vote on the amendment to move WJCC Resolution approving county bond financing for school project to the discussion? 8.0, in front of 8.03?
Dr. Beers?
No.
Ms. Cook?
No.
Ms. Hummel?
No.
Ms. Minor?
No.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
No. Motion fails. Can I get a mo, it's been moved and seconded for approval of the agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Ms. Serzak?
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Minor?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
No.
Mrs. Young?
No.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. 5.01 announcements superintendent's report. Dr. Constantino?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. WJCC has been named as one of the best communities for music education by the NAMM Foundation. NAMM stands for the National Association of Music Merchandisers. This year, the NAMM Foundation recognized only 476 of the nation's 13,515 school districts as the best communities for music education. The award recognizes the commitment of school administrators, community leaders, teachers, parents, school board members who believe in music education and are working to ensure that it's part of a complete education for all children. In another good piece, in another piece of good news, WJCC has been awarded a $25,000 grant from the National Park Service. In a newly created partnership with WJCC Public Schools, Colonial National Historical Park is working with our teachers to develop and implement a new fourth grade program. The multidisciplinary program will engage students through active outdoor participation when students and teachers, led by professional kayakers and educators from the Chesapeake experience, will kayak a local waterway adjoining Jamestown Island and conduct hands-on activities. Then, a teacher and park ranger will give a tour of the Jamestown Colony historic site, where students will investigate the park's flora and fauna, learning about their historic use and importance. Once established, this fourth grade program will be offered each school year with a long-term goal to expand the project to encompass more grade levels. I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate all of the staff members who made both of these accomplishments possible and a reality. And those are all the announcements I have this evening.
Any announcements from any board members? Or comments? I know we have a screening tomorrow night of Most Likely to Succeed. But I'd invite people to attend, but I guess we're already filled up, so, which is about 400 and some, so, a lot of good, a lot of good support for that, so it'll be good to see. And you took my other two notes, so, sorry. Anything else from other board members? That brings us to 6.01 citizens' comments. Dr. Beers?
It is at this point in our meeting where citizens are invited to address the board. Those citizens desiring to speak have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the chair of the board. It is the board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Hence, the citizens are asked to not engage in applauding, verbal outbursts, or any other type demonstrations during the presentation. Personal matters are not considered in public meetings. Therefore, the board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the board does not respond to your comments, your comments are heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to make their presentation, and the board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chair. My directions are concluded.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Mrs. Cook?
Virginia Amos, and thank you for help with pronunciation.
My name is Virginia Lawback Amos. I am a graduate of James Blair High School. We understand that there are some demolition processes going on that contractor has not been voted on. But we have asked, as a group, to be recipients of some of the bricks, if at all possible. We had thought maybe we would use the bricks for our group to raise money for the Ray Freed Memorial Scholarship. If that's unacceptable because of it being sold after given, we would just like for you all to approve giving some bricks to us so we can have a memento of our high school. Our high school stopped being a high school 43 years ago. And we just would like to have something to remember our school by. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Oscar Blatton?
Good evening. I just want to speak briefly. I apparently showed up a couple of weeks too early, because people will be coming, I guess, on the 19th to speak about the Roalsbird issue, but since I put on my tie and came here, I figured I'd go ahead and say something. Next meeting, you're probably going to hear a fair number of people speak about what a pernicious racist Roalsbird was. And a lot of people are going to deny that, and say, oh, there's no record of this, there's no written record. They're probably going to find very little written documentation about the things this man did. But that doesn't mean it didn't happen. And I think that you should have an open mind when you hear these people talk about the things that he did and the individuals who suffered under his administration. When someone's standing on your toe, you certainly feel the pain of it, but that person may not know that they're stepping on your toe or won't feel the pain that you feel. So the black community in this neighborhood, the black community in Williamsburg and James City County, really did suffer under this man. And he really was a bigot and a bully. And people are going to come and tell you these things, and you should listen with an open mind and don't expect to, you know, see any written record. It's unfair to expect that back in the '30s and the '40s and the '50s, these people were writing down, oh, yes, I did this to these people and I did that to those people, because they did not want history to know. So, you know, just because it's not written doesn't mean it's not there. Oral history is very important. If there was no oral history, you would not know about Adam and Eve, because who would have been there to record it? The snake? You know, so you've got to understand there's going to be oral testimony, oral evidence given about what happened. And I want you to give that the weight and credit that is due. And that's basically what I want to say about that. And I've written a letter, which I think the board members have received, where I gave my personal opinion about it, and I hope you give that some due consideration. Thank you.
Suzanne Dorsett?
Hi, I'm Suzanne Dorsett, and I am a mother of two boys. One of them is a 12-year-old in Berkeley, and the other one I've put in Walsingham, and I'd like to take back out and put back in the public school. But my biggest concern right now, and this comes from my heart in a really passionate way, are these SOLs. And I'm also very concerned about how the board is here, the superintendent's here, and the parents and the teachers are over here. Your teachers are really stressed out, and I've talked to them, and a lot of them are on antidepressants, a lot of them are anxious, a lot of them feel like they can't teach the way they used to be able to teach. They're teaching to the tests now. The kids are anxious, particularly the lower-functioning ones who are not doing as well. I worked in Newport News, and there were kids throwing up in the library before test time. I'm a clinical social worker. I can tell you firsthand that anxiety disorders are up, obsessive-compulsive disorders are up. We are really, really focusing in on these tests way too much, and we're making too big of a deal of them, and we are making people nervous wrecks. The other piece is we're not working together. The parents, the teachers, the superintendent, the administration, we're not working together. We need to be working together because we all care about these kids. It's not about the money. It's about the kids. And we need to start joining hands and fighting these tests. There's too many. What is there, 17 now? There's too many. We don't have a union here, so we're not going to be like New York, where they really are coming forward as much as maybe here we, we're not here. I'm opting out, my son. He's not doing poorly in school. He's in the gifted program. He gets As. But I have to stand my ground. This is not right, and we're not working together as a team. We need to be. This is not you guys up here and us down here. We have to join hands. We have to go up to the state together. So when the board goes up together, you need to ask a parent and teachers to come with you, not just put out a meeting on your computer and say, oh, we can go up there. Call somebody and ask them to come up. These kids are stressed out, and the teachers are stressed out. Let's please join hands and work together on this. We have to get rid of these tests. There's too many, and it's destroying the public school system all over the country. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dorsett.
Kristin Holm?
Good evening, Chairman Kelly, school board members, Dr. Constantino. My name is Kristin Holm, and I am a Lafayette High School parent. I am currently serving as the treasurer of the Athletic Booster Club. Tonight, I'd like to highlight some of the facts and figures from the packet that we recently provided each of the school board members. According to our school records, our WJCC high school campuses vary greatly in size, with the largest belonging to Jamestown High School with approximately 80 acres, and the smallest belonging to Lafayette High School, approximately 50 acres. In taking a closer look at each high school's facilities and the use of their acreage for athletic fields, the following inequities become clear. Jamestown High School has a main gym and an auxiliary gym totaling approximately 17,600 square feet, and can accommodate two full courts, one in each gym, in support of their practices, their games, and their physical education curriculum. Warhill High School has one main gym with approximately 13,300 square feet and the ability to accommodate two full-size courts in support of practices, games, and curriculum. Lafayette has one gym built in 1973 with approximately 10,500 square feet and accommodating one full-size court to support similar practices, games, and curriculum needs. To provide an image for comparison, Warhill's gym is approximately 3,000 square feet larger than Lafayette's gym. If you picture a 3,000-square-foot ranch home, that is about the equivalent to the additional space provided by Warhill's Gymnasium. I urge you to consider the disadvantage that this presents Lafayette High School in accommodating their sports program and their curriculum needs. Remember that 50% of our athletes travel off-campus to practices around our community, not by choice, but out of necessity. The building of an auxiliary gym at Lafayette would eliminate the majority of our transportation needs to accommodate practice schedules, but more importantly, it will remedy our current dependency on the James Blair Gymnasium. The packet has also provided you with details of logistics involved in delivering our Lafayette students safely to practices off-campus. It provides possible plans for an auxiliary gym, and it provides a solution for consideration when working on a strategic plan that includes Lafayette's additional capital improvement needs. As you move forward with the plan to build the new James Blair Middle School, please work with us to make it a move forward for Lafayette High School as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Holm.
Bob Stivender?
That's rather close.
Sorry.
Virginia was saying how hard it was to say her name, believe me.
Can you tell?
I can. Stivender.
Stivender. And Ms. Serzak told me that. I apologize.
That's quite a lot. I, too, am a graduate of James Blair High School, class of 68, to be precise, and we're standing right now in a rhythm that was very important to me called the library. And a lot of memories are in this building, a lot of memories about this school. I want you to be aware that as a high school, it was a school of excellence. We often were, if not at the very top, near the top nationally on SAT score averages. Our beyond-high-school achievements were many, and I can't begin to tell you the number of postgraduate degrees that the graduates of this institution, of this school, achieved. I come here, first of all, to thank you for considering keeping this property as a place of learning. I think the only disappointment I had about this becoming an administrative center was just that, that it was no longer a place where we were actively engaged in learning. I also want to thank you for taking the name James Blair and preserving it. James Blair, as you know historically, was very important in the education of this colony and of this country. That his name remains as part of this property and in a learning environment is a good thing. I want to ask you, as you go through this process, to try to accommodate we graduates, to some degree at least. Yes, we'd like to talk to you about the possibility of bricks. I'm kind of in a dark hole here, too, because I don't know if the gym's going to remain or not, and maybe you don't know yet. But if the gym's going to be destroyed, there were a lot of people who represented this county as the, at that time, the major high school in this county athletically, who would be interested, I think, in a board. Bricks and boards, I would prefer to say we are not going to sell them. I would prefer to say that we are going to give them in response to a donation to the free scholarship. I also would like to ask that before we, there is a demolition of this building, that the James Blair High School Alumni Association have an opportunity to have a function here. We have, hopefully, a multi-class reunion the end of July, if it's at all possible for us to use the gym or another meeting room here.
I'm sorry, we're out of time, but I appreciate your insistence there.
Well, thank you. And if any way I can help, I would like to.
Kathy Woolam?
Good evening, Dr. Constantino, Chairman Kelly, and members of the school board. Again, thank you for your continued support of Lafayette High School. We appreciate that our needs were in the fiscal year '17 budget. Unfortunately, most of us in this room are aware that they are not funded today. So we continue to search for creative solutions, and I sent a follow-up email to the board this evening, and I thought I would go ahead and read it to you because I don't think you had a whole lot of time to do that. And it says, Dear Dr. Constantino and members of the WJCC School Board, we have an immediate gym capacity problem at LHS with no clear, immediate solution. However, it appears there is an opportunity to meld a solution together. Related to our past inquiries about the potential for a spending plan request of last year's budget overage, in order to begin construction of an auxiliary gym at LHS, we are excited to learn that there exists yet another potential component of a collaborative solution to remedy the urgent needs of Lafayette High School. Please see Mr. Hill's confirmation below, an email that was attached, of the possibility to bundle projects so that the start of LHS Auxiliary Gym could correspond with the demolition of this James Blair Gym that today serves as Lafayette's Auxiliary Gym. The Planning Commission's recent recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to fund Lafayette's Auxiliary Gym at a ranking of five from 14 illustrates the community's intent to solve this problem. It also seems that we have a great partner in the city of Williamsburg, since both James Blair and Lafayette are of significant concern to them. Thank you for considering these options, namely, the spending plan request of last year's budget overage and a joint approach to the James Blair and auxiliary, the James Blair construction and the Lafayette Auxiliary Gym construction. And I end the letter with, "Our LHS community appreciates your commitment to forward progress to ensure a premier school system for our Williamsburg-James City County community." So again, as always, thank you very much.
Thank you. Hello?
Yes.
We have a pen crisis on the table here, so. That takes us to 7.01. Can I get a motion for approval of the county bond financing for the school project?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of item 7.01, WJCC Resolution approving county bond financing for school project.
Is there? And there's a second? Is there any discussion?
I have a couple of questions.
Ms. Mike?
I know this is a funding mechanism, but I have limited understanding of markets and armitage and all of the other jargon that was in the resolution, so I'm asking Ms. Burne and Dr. Constantino, have we done the due diligence, and has our board attorney looked at it, and are we good to go?
Yes, ma'am. The school board attorney has reviewed the documentation provided by the county bond council and financial advisors, as well as Sue Mellon from the county. In front of you tonight, as a result of that review, there was one minor change that was made to that bond document. It's on page 11, section 4.9, and it's adjusted to reflect the addition of the school board's furnishing and equipment, should we purchase any additional furnishings and equipment, that that would be our equipment and would not go in the lease. We do have with us Sue Mellon from the county, as well as Courtney Rogers from Davenport, and Chris Culp from the bond council. They are available to answer questions, should you have any for them.
Any other questions, discussion items? Very well, it's been moved and seconded for approval of the county bond financing for the school project. Ms. Serzak, could you take the vote, please?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Minor?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
No.
Mrs. Young?
No.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. That takes us to 7.02 Personnel Actions. Is there a motion for approval of the personnel actions presented tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I move the adoption of the personnel actions as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? It's been moved and seconded for approval of the personnel actions as presented tonight. Ms. Serzak?
Ms. Minor?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. Thank you. 7.03, can I get a motion to appoint Mrs. Minor as the school board member of the 21st Century and Career Advisory Committee?
I move that we appoint Mary Minor to replace me on the 21st Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? I'll take the discussion for this. With Mr. Fuentes stepping down, we had to ask Mrs. Hummel to do double duty. She is the mass to be on the Education Foundation Board, and so in order to not ask her to be on three different committees, we're switching her out of the 21st Century and Career Ready. Not that she's not committed to that and doesn't want to remain a member of that.
I might just keep showing up at the meetings, just because I like meetings.
Just make sure there's only two of you there. Good. And so I appreciate Mrs. Minor stepping up to do that. Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded for appointment of Mrs. Minor's of the 21st Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee. Ms. Serzak?
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Minor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. That takes us to 8.0, to discussion of proposed agenda items, 8.01, purchase of school buses. Dr. Constantino?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Kelly. My computer just, here it is. It's back. Thank you. As you know, we have a bus replacement and smoothing plan, and Mr. Snipes is here to talk about the purchase of four school buses to continue with that plan, and I believe we'll have information about updating that plan as we go into the future. Mr. Snipes?
Good evening, Dr. Constantino, school board members. Policy DJ, the school board, requires you to, asks to bring forward to you any purchases that are above $50,000. The school division has adopted a school bus replacement plan that suggests replacing nine buses annually. Buses that are older than the state recommended 15 years in age are scheduled for replacement. The fiscal year 2016 budget allows for replacement of three buses. The purchase of the three buses allows WJCC to meet the replacement plan for fiscal year 2016. The purchase of one additional bus allows the division to move ahead of the plan. Vendor Sonny Merriman Incorporated is the approved state vendor under the contract. This purchase will permit us to replace two of the special education buses at approximately $108,625 each, and two of the full-size buses at $108,249 each. If you have questions in regards to the cost budget, Ms. Burne can assist.
Any questions from board members?
Was this all part of our normal budget retreat when we talked about bus replacements? Well, it was one of our...
Things that we prioritized.
Prioritized?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we did a bus replacement plan a few years ago in order to keep pace with aging of buses, I think it was nine buses a year.
Correct.
Because this is not an expansion of the fleet, this is replacements, these come out of our operating budget versus our capital budget.
Correct.
Which makes sense to somebody. But that's, so this is just kind of a routine, a routine purchase.
Yes, three of those school buses will allow us to complete the nine for fiscal year 16, and that, those funds are budgeted in our fiscal year 16 budget. The additional bus purchases due to the fact that the city of Williamsburg approved our year-end spending plan for a purchase of an additional bus. So that is why we want to proceed and purchase that additional bus to move us forward. In front of you is a bus replacement updated schedule on what the effect of us not including buses in our fiscal year '17 budget and what that will have an effect on going forward. You will notice that we will be ahead by one, the number prior in fiscal year '17. The number prior in fiscal year 17 that would be coming due for replacement was 14 prior to the additional funding from the city of Williamsburg. That has been changed to 13 going forward. But due to the fact that we don't have any buses coming due for replacement of fiscal year 18, that is why we proposed our budget to you without buses included for next year in order to balance.
So, you're proposing moving from nine to 10 a year, is that?
That is correct.
And so these would be all 10s?
If we had funding to support that, yes.
Yes. These would be 10s. The darker blue, yeah. Yeah. If the funny, if, yeah.
So instead of having like five in 2020, we'd have 10?
Yeah, the idea would be to smooth this.
Smooth this, okay.
Correct.
Yeah, the left-hand column shows you how many buses are coming due for replacement based on that 15-year recommended replacement mark at the state level.
Yeah. So we could wave our magic wand.
We smooth it because you'll notice in some of the outer years, you have 24 buses coming due for replacement. That's nearly impossible to do all in one year.
You know, I know this is, we've got an issue with buses. I know some time ago, there was a one or two-year period where we bought no new buses. And one of the things that I've looked at a lot of numbers, and if we were just to average 100 new kids a year in our schools, after a couple of years, if we haven't bought any new buses, additional, I don't mean replacement buses, additional buses, we really start to fall behind. And I hope the board at some time would really take a close look at that and, because it has a huge impact on bus routes, on the schedule of the bus routes. It has a real impact on whether schools have a late start time or early start time. So I think it would be really helpful to, in the best of all possible worlds, start to look at what is the number that would, you know, as we look at the continued growth in the school district, that we need to add each year, not just in terms of replacement, but each year. What's a typical, how many kids sit on a typical bus? 50, 60 kids?
A typical bus holds 50 kids.
So, if 200 kids show up, you know, 100 kids show up, new kids show up next year, do we, we fulfill with our schedule, don't we? If we're not going to buy new buses, we still have the same number of buses. So we, the only way to accommodate that is to work with our, work with the scheduling. So I, you know, I've, I'm just concerned about that, that I know we did go through a period where the board, for, you know, clearly financial reasons, and I understand that, back, I don't know the exact year, '07, '08, '09, said no new additional buses. And as a result of that, we're, my assumption is, and Superintendent, you can correct me, that we're still sort of in a catch-up mode in order to accommodate the continued growth in our school district.
Generally speaking, I agree with you. There was a time during the recession when the division, for reasons that you stated very well, did not purchase buses. I would share your concern that this plan keeps us treading water, would be the metaphor that I would use. But for all of, for those board members who are interested in looking at alternatives to start times to different tiers, those are additional buses, and the county, county-city contract calls for additional new buses as part of the capital improvement plan, replacement buses as part of the operational plan. So, with the addition of new students each year, yes, there's more strain placed on the system, the transportation, as you all know, I think most of you, or if not all of you, have visited transportation. If you haven't, I would recommend you go there on the first day of school.
I'm sure he wants us. I don't think he wants us there that day.
Well, they do a good job of pretending they want us there, but they do, they make a Herculean effort to make this all work, and there are always issues. I do get emails from time to time from parents who are frustrated about buses that are having to do double runs, drivers. The other part of the equation of buses is drivers, mechanics, bus aides, and all of the costs associated with additional fleet. So it's a fairly big-ticket item. The plan that we have in place right now is we are conducting a study, an efficiency study of our routes, and as part of the capital improvement plan conversation in the fall, I think we need to bring to you and demonstrate exactly what this means and where we are, and some decisions have to be made by the board as to what direction we need to go in. Okay.
The other impact I hear, because we don't have additional buses, is that we actually impact the school's ability to provide those additional resources in field trips and out-of-school experiences.
Correct.
Because they have to be back for the, they can't leave at high school. They have to be back for the runs or elementary or whatever.
Correct. There's limitations to the ability to have school. For example, you know, we're very committed to the arts, and we take all of our fifth-grade students. It's coming up in a few weeks. We will take all of the kids to Norfolk, and getting all of our fifth graders to Norfolk and back in between all of the runs we have to do is unbelievable. So, yeah, you're right. And I think New Horizons as well. There was always a concern expressed by the board about the degree to which the bus had to leave early so that it could get the kids down there and back. And that does have an impact on students who perhaps might want to participate in New Horizons, but when faced with a start time that's pretty early, decide perhaps not. So all of those are very valid points.
So how many double runs do we have right now?
I couldn't tell you that right off, but I can get that information for you.
Okay.
It changes by the day because it depends on absenteeism. It depends on whether buses are broken down or need repair, so it changes daily.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Snipes.
And, you know, the lack of buses also puts pressure on the fleet because you've got to make sure the buses are running and that they're there. And, you know, that fifth-grade field trip to Norfolk, I mean, at least you don't have any traffic issues between here and Norfolk.
The tunnel, the tunnel's clear.
No problem.
As someone who does half of that every day, so. Any other comments on buses? Thank you. Authorization, 8.02, Authorization of Purchase of Materials for High School Refresh and Transfer Funds. Dr. Constantino?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you know, we have a program in place for high school refresh of technology, and Mr. Landers is here to explain the request for the refresh, what we're doing, and why we do it.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Dr. Constantino, the purpose of this agenda item is to request authorization that will allow us to continue with our technology refresh cycle. It includes authorization of purchase of materials for the high school refresh in the amount of $810,000, I'm sorry, $810,850 to electronic systems, as well as an accounting transfer of funds from Instructional Services Cost Center to the Technology Cost Center. The Division Technology Refresh Cycle is designed to ensure that all instructional devices for students, teachers, administrators, including both laptops and desktops, are current operational and covered under a three-year manufacturer warranty to control our ongoing maintenance cost. Additionally, it also ensures that the laptops and desktops are within the current industry standards to be able to support the compatibility needed for the educational programs and applications that students, teachers, and administrators use on a daily basis. The refresh plan does include end-user devices, including teacher laptops, student-use laptops, lab and media center desktops, as well as administrative devices. The schedule for our three-year refresh cycle would be summer of '16 this year, the high school, summer of '17 next year, the middle school, and summer of '18, the elementary. The total purchase amount for the high school refresh to award to electronic systems, again, is $810,850, and it would make use of a cooperative purchasing contract. The price includes approximately 1,253 student and teacher laptops, 724 student-use lab computers, and 23 building administration computers. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Ms. Burn for the transfer.
The majority of the funding is included in your fiscal year '16 budget in the amount of $590,850. However, during the fiscal year '16 adoption process, we had to make some budget reductions. One of those reductions that was made was $300,000 was reduced out of the Technology Cost Center with the hopes that we would be able to identify attrition savings at the end of this year to transfer those funds back in to support this cost. So we are asking for $220,000 to be authorized to be transferred from Instructional Services Cost Center into Technology to support this purchase.
Questions?
I have one. I spent a great deal of time going through the technology plan and reading it. So what I took from that is we have a lot of outputs. We have a lot of, we have this many laptops, we have this many instructors, we've done this many things. But what I don't have is, what's the achievement outcome for our students, which ultimately, $800,000 in investment should have some, and when do we do the evaluation? I guess my question to the superintendent's staff is, when do we get the evaluation back on the outcomes for our students? I understand about the purchasing and needing to refresh it, but are we getting the bang for the buck in student achievement and student earning? And how will we know that?
I don't know that I can point to any particular test score or anything directly like that to tell you that they've moved from this level of performance to that level of performance. However, what we have done is we have surveyed the teachers, the students, the parents in association with our one-to-one pilot program at the middle school level. And based on the results of those surveys, we have gotten very positive feedback from the students that they find it easier to be organized using the laptops. They find it easier to complete some of their homework assignments using the laptops. The parents, honestly, there's been a little bit of mixed feedback from them. Overall, I think that it is very positive. There have been concerns, again specifically tied with the one-to-one pilot program, of carrying the laptop back and forth, but other than that, they seem to be fairly positive. Again, they feel that their children are able to complete their homework assignments easier. They feel that they're more engaged in completing those homework assignments. So from that perspective, I can tell you the feedback has been overall very positive. But again, I can't point to any one thing to say, see how much we have either increased or decreased a certain measure.
Okay, I guess the other question is, have we seen any challenges for those families that are not as technologically savvy with getting online or getting into view or using the 360?
We have put a great deal, several different supports in place to be able to assist those families. The ITRTs that serve those buildings are basically a help desk for the students to be able to come in and ask questions. They do email back and forth with the parents. We have a frequently asked questions page on our Division website, as well as the school websites. We've provided information even with some of the, some of the vendors in the industry that provide discounted internet connections for those families that may be economically disadvantaged. So we have provided quite a few supports to our families for that. In addition, we also provide parent information nights before the students are handed the device. We provide, we invite the parents in. They can come in, they can see the device, they can touch it, they can ask questions so that we can try to head off any concerns they may have.
So this refresh, though, is for high school, right?
Correct.
So these are all going to be building-based?
Yes. Very, very good distinction, yes. This is specifically for the standard high school refresh of the building-based devices.
Okay, thank you. Just the parent night thing, went to that. It was very, very good and very helpful.
Good.
Is there any information that, you're giving us a lot of useful information. Is this information and some kind of a document that's on the website that, about the parent? Like, detailed information, more detail than what's on here?
Specifically, can you help me what you're looking for, ma'am?
Well, just, I guess I'd like to have a little more detail, but that's okay.
No, I'm happy to provide whatever information you may need.
Because I'm like 800, it's almost a million dollars to me. It's just a lot of money. And then I guess my other question is, so this is a budget transfer from Instructional Services.
Correct.
So, we're not having to spend any more money than we thought in the budget, right? It's just transferring.
Correct, it's not beyond the adopted budget.
So, what do you mean by due to attrition savings? What do you mean by that? And like, and I'm just worried, is there anything on the Instructional Services Cost Center? What's giving? What is being lost?
When we develop, when we develop the budget, we are basing it off of current staff. During the year or over the summer, we lose staff. So you have higher-paid staff that are exiting that we've budgeted for, and you hire newer level staff that are sometimes at entry level. So we have a large volume of money that we achieve from that if we have an exit of several employees. So we have attrition savings every year because we're building our budget based on what we currently have, and that's not the staff that we always end up with in the next September. It's an average.
But we budget on an average salary.
Yeah, we budget on an average salary.
We don't budget on actual salary. We budget on average salary.
I guess my take on technology is that, and I've always looked at instructional technology, particularly in the hardware department, is it's like any other instrument or piece of material that you need to learn. We have to read books, we write, we have calculators, we, it's not, and it's not necessarily that you're going to be smarter, you're going to get better grades, but if you don't know how to operate those, that hardware, like how to use a calculator, then you're at a real disadvantage. And I really think that's, to me, that's the most helpful way to look at this. It's not, our scores aren't going to skyrocket because everybody's, excuse me, because everybody's using laptops and using this technology all across the state, all across the country as one more, you know, one more piece of material that I think of so that you can, so you can learn. And my assumption is that you've worked out a sort of a, you know, a rotating schedule so that, you know, on a fairly regular basis, we're replacing the old stuff with the new stuff. And we have to do that. Because eventually, when those students leave, they're not going to be going to old stuff. They're going to be going to the latest, you know, wherever they work, wherever they're doing. So, I know it's expensive, but it's really, it's really important.
And that, are you right? I'm sorry. So, now I'm sorry, because am I thinking about this being building-based technology? Because the one-to-one hasn't gotten it, but in three years, it will be part of the high school refresh, yes? And so that budget item might go up a little bit. I'm just thinking, I mean, budgeting's your problem, but...
There's two points I wanted to make. One is to keep in your mind separate, refresh from one-to-one. Those are two very different issues.
Okay, okay.
The one-to-one initiative, when it does get to the high school, will be additional funding.
Okay.
That's number one. Number two, I think the other point that Brian made that I'd like to reiterate is that $800,000 is a lot of money. It would be a lot more money if we let these computers go off of the three-year maintenance agreements.
Yeah.
And so, we don't want to do that. And we want to keep these, we want to keep this technology on maintenance agreements because sometimes crazy things happen with technology in schools, and it's nice to hand one in and get it fixed or get a new one, as opposed to having to pay that. If anybody's had, taken their computer to the repair shop, you know that the cost can add up quickly. So I just wanted to make those two points. And the refresh, I appreciate Mrs. Minor's comments about the plan in terms of the process that we share with the state, and also the plan that we have, the plan that Brian has developed for the refreshing, to keep computers and to keep technology in our schools to the best of our ability.
Can I just ask a question? So the refresh that you're discussing here, are those computers that would be refreshed? Or are they on the three-year plan now? And is that three-year plan expiring this year?
Well, I guess I use the term refresh and replace a little bit interchangeably because, yes, those computers, they would be replaced as part of the overall refresh cycle this summer. Does that make sense?
But my question is, are we at the end of the... But my question is, are we at the end of this cycle, the three-year cycle, where we're at the point where they need to be replaced?
For the high schools, yes, ma'am. This summer, the current laptops, desktops that are in the high schools will fall off of that warranty if we don't replace them, refresh them. So we're at the end of that three-year cycle for the high schools this year. Next year, we will be looking at the middle schools. The following year, we will look at the elementary schools.
So this is a continuous three-year cycle?
Yes, ma'am.
It never is.
Exactly. That's what a cycle is, I think.
So does this mean that next year, we're going to get another request that due to attrition savings, it's going to be moved from Instructional Services?
We have built that into the budget request so that we would not have to do this.
On your lineup? Yeah, because that's what I'm just saying that it just seems like if it truly, you know, if we've got a three-year refresh, then the Cost Center should reflect that.
I think what Christine was saying before was that they came to us with an $800,000 budget. We cut it down to 500 because we didn't get enough money. And we were hoping that we would have the attrition savings, and so all that has come to pass. And so now he's...
Yeah, the use of the attrition funds was never the original plan. The original plan was to budget the funds we needed, but we couldn't get them.
Okay, I understand.
But couldn't that attrition funds be used for other things?
Sure.
Yeah, they absolutely could.
Or not, and returned back to the locality.
Either way, that's the discretion of the board.
So right now, we're transferring 220,000 out of, just for some context for Julie, the line item that we're transferring the 220 out of, it's originally at... What was the, how much does that line item budgeted for?
It's salary line, so it's $45 million in salaries. That's where it's coming from.
And how much is going to be left over in your attrition savings for other transfer sort of...
At this point in time, it's hard for me to tell you that because we're on the process of doing year-end spending and cutting off and monitoring all of that. Last year, we were within 1% of our overall budget, and at that point, we can make decisions about what we do with that leftover funding.
Because where I'm coming from with this is that, like, when we're thinking about things, like the auxiliary gym, for instance, we're looking at something that... We're looking at, there is an established need for something, for an auxiliary gym for the students of Lafayette High School. And this is a good need, too. I'm not saying it's not, but I'm like, if we're taking funds to move for a refresh for technology, what's the opportunity cost for that?
One of the problems with, we can't use it for capital money. So this is the operating budget.
Thank you. Okay, I understand. Okay, so it can't, so that money is not money for us to...
Go build things.
To do plans or...
Right. We could probably use some of it to do, and I was going to talk about that later, but to do some planning.
Yes.
Things, but not detailed. So you can go a little bit down the, you use operating budget money to kind of help you get your estimates and things, but you can't go out there to use that for construction because it's different colors.
So these funds are for replacing existing computers?
So that's like consider upgrading?
If we wanted to buy 1,000 additional computers, would that be, would that end up being in a different category?
It would still be an operational item, but would be included in your adopted budget.
Yeah, it's what they describe as capital and what they describe as like...
That's been debated over the years.
Exactly. A bus that costs $100,000, if you replace it, it's operating, but if you buy it for... If you make an additional bus, it's now capital, but it's still the same $100,000.
Yeah, I can...
I don't, but my day job's always going to jam.
And again, not to be funny, but there's a difference of opinion amongst a lot of people as to whether large purchases of technology like this are capital or operational.
Right.
At the moment, they're operational.
Right. My question, so we're replacing 1,253 student-teacher laptops, and it pretty much gets up to 2,000 pretty quickly, right, when you start adding all this up? Are all those computers fully utilized? Because I'd hate to buy a computer, set it on a desk, and then pick it up three years later and refresh it, and it's never been used.
I, on a fairly regular basis, get a request from the principals, please give me more.
Okay.
So they are fully utilized.
Okay.
Some of the labs, naturally, more than others. Some of the laptop carts, more than others. But in general, they are fully utilized, and the principals come to me on a fairly regular basis asking for even more.
Right. So between the high schools and middle schools and the elementary, just for future thinking here, which one, are we going to have a smaller number next year, the middle school, and then a smaller elementary, or is the numbers pretty much equivalent?
As opposed to the number of computers at the high school?
Right now, we're going to have 2,000 computers. So we have 2,000 computers in the middle schools and 2,000 in the elementary, so it's about the same number?
Well, division-wide, we have in the neighborhood of 12,000 devices, laptop, desktops, so that's...
You're 12,000 in the high school.
I'm sorry. That is low. I can get you the numbers.
Okay, that's a curious question.
They're fairly comparable, but I can get you the numbers pretty easily.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I guess I just want to, once again, say, like, if we're proving this, then I want to feel comfortable that there is still room left somewhere in the budget to move from one place to another or whatever for any operational kind of funds for architectural drawings, whatever things we can do for the auxiliary gym.
At this point in time, with me looking at projections, there will be additional funding, but I cannot guarantee that because a lot can change between April the 12th and June 30th. We could have a catastrophic event that happens that we have to fund. So I don't want to make empty promises, but that's our ultimate goal is to always have leftover funding. That's the conservative finance person's role is to make sure we don't cut the budget so close that we do have some.
What's the, I should know this, but what's your sort of optimal date when everybody's notified? Okay, if you haven't bought it by now, we're keeping it. We're using it. What is that?
All of those dates have been sent out already.
The first warning shot.
Typically, it's the second week in May. That's when we cut things off completely.
And your goal is certainly not to go red, stay in the black.
No, I do not like red.
Because if we go in the red, we got a real problem.
Yes.
She never wears red.
That's true. But, you know, last year, on our budget of 120 million, we were 1%, so...
Yeah, 1.2 million.
1.2 million to the good. So that's a real good use of funding there.
Yeah, tight management.
Any other questions on computers? Next item is contract partial demolition of James Blair Middle School.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a placeholder, oops, this is a placeholder item, excuse me, to award a bid for 168330 partial demolition of the James Blair Middle School. Mr. Snipes?
Good evening again. School Board members, Dr. Constino. The project is comprised of partial building demolition, relocation, and construction of a central office reception area. The project is scheduled for final completion on or about August 30th. And the scope of the work for this project includes the removal of specified existing building structures, including roofs, walls, and foundation walls, removal of existing concrete footings, relocation and construction, as I said, of the central office reception area, relocation of fire, cable, HVAC, power, phone, and the utility room, installation of security doors and security access. An invitation for bid was issued on March 16th with the due date of April 8th. A notice of this IFB was posted on the James City County Bulletin Board, emailed to contractors, and placed on the Williamsburg-James City County Public School websites. Again, this is a placeholder agenda item, and at the time this agenda item was prepared, the bid opening process had not been conducted.
How many proposals did you receive?
For this, for the James Blair demo, we received three proposals.
And are they...
You just know I'm going to ask something. How can we accommodate the requests of two of the speakers tonight for when we're doing the demolition, for that to be part of the contract? For, to save, you know, some boards, bricks?
Dr. Constino and I talked about that.
Yeah, we're presently, under, with Mr. Paula's help and Mr. Odstott's help, we're presently putting a plan together to make sure that all of our athletes have facilities. And right at the moment, we're waiting for information from athletic directors about schedules and practices, and we'll come back to you when that schedule is done. But we understand the importance of making sure that that happens.
That was a great answer to the question. It's not what she asked.
That was going to be my second question.
Let me listen more closely.
I think we anticipated the question that you were going to ask.
I was going to ask that question.
Do I have that question in my head?
Thank you for answering the other question I was going to ask. This question was for the James Blair alumni.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that was a really important answer. I'm glad you answered the question I was thinking about, asking that.
Yes. As we, in early discussions with the school board when the architects were coming with early plans, one of the things that we had discussed and is part of the plan is to use some of the James Blair lobby space as a way to preserve the history of the James Blair School and James Blair site. That's been discussed from day one. And I've actually asked the citizens this evening who spoke to give me a way to contact them because we actually would be very interested in working with them because part of this demolition, Mr. Snipes and I have worked pretty exhaustively to ensure that before anything is demolished, all of the artifacts and everything that is associated with James Blair is catalogued, kept, secured, and then a process needs to happen with regard to what would we like to keep and what would we like to showcase and what could we give away if that's a possibility? And so we're very open, I'm very open to working with our staff and working with interested citizens in preserving the history of the school.
Yeah, I would just ask that you make sure we go through legal and all that stuff.
We, I should say, we are.
Yeah, because I tried to do this at some point in my other job, and that was, got to be kind of a problem. So, but, you know, we don't have any use for too many of those chairs in the auditorium, the floor in the gym. I mean, if we can give that to people who are going to do good use of that, I think we should be fully supportive of that.
We've been, we were approached early on by numerous citizens who know the history of Blair, and it's always been in the forefront of this plan, and I have it. So we'll make sure it happens.
So I am sorry, but I was so busy saying, that's not the question that she asked. That's not that I didn't, can you repeat that answer to the first? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I really was, he's not...
I'm lining up with the right question.
I believe that this is the question that I received telepathically from Mrs. Hummel regarding the plan for athletes. And the plan is, we clearly understand the need to ensure that all of our athletes have appropriate places to play. We've asked, I've asked Mr. Paula and Mr. Odstott to work on this. There is, we are working with James City County Parks and Rec. Mr. Hill just sent me an email the other day saying, anything that we can do to help you and support you, so there's good team effort. We are presently in the process of waiting for lists of needs from our three ADs, and then we will put a plan together to ensure that all this works.
And so it is a division-wide approach?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Because when, right now, while the school is being constructed, if I understand correctly, Cooley Field will still be operational, but then I presume, once the school is completed, Cooley Field will sort of become part of this property. And so it's not only, but long-term, it's an athletic facility kind of conversation overall?
Cooley Field and its use will remain as Cooley Field and its use always has.
Okay.
Which is a shared facility and, you know, with a school on the property and then other athletic teams that use the field for both practice and games.
Okay. Thank you.
So that does bring up another question in my mind that, once James Blair is built and that gymnasium is going to then be used primarily for James Blair students as a middle school, then it's still going to beg the question that we're going to need a lot of coordination if we don't, if we're not already building or in the process of building an auxiliary gym for Lafayette?
That's correct.
It, I might go off on a tangent here. It would be my hope that by the time that this building is complete with middle school students, that there would be a gym, an auxiliary gym at Lafayette.
That would be really great.
You know, we put that in our, we put that in our plan. The county didn't fund that. So I think it's incumbent upon us to come up with our needs as soon as possible. And so that if the county rec center has to modify their offerings so that our kids have a place to practice, you know, so they don't have as many adult leagues or there's something that the county's going to, you know, and the city are going to do what they can to help support our athletes. So, because I think the consensus is, as far as major ticket items, that after the middle school, the aux gym is the number one. You know, we have the security enhancements that we're doing that aren't really big ticket items, but, you know, we've got to push that. You know, they're playing in a... Their gym was built before volleyball was a big thing, and they have, they...
In 1972 standards.
Right, and I don't even know if girls were playing full-court basketball back then. But, you know, so it's...
Might not have been.
Well, that's close. At the high school level, maybe. Did I go somewhere I shouldn't have? But, you know, we definitely have to work with the county to get that moved forward.
Well, you know, one of the proposals that the county made quite a few years ago was to have a gym constructed with Whiskins.
Right.
That was equidistant between Lafayette and War Hill. And to me, in terms of, you know, what's cost-effective, that may turn out to be...
But I disagree with that, Jim, because I think that to, you're going to have the same situation with some of the fields that Lafayette High School's doing, start having to drive all the way, you know, drive to Whisk or, God forbid, go through the ravine. Whereas I think that they need an auxiliary gym on their site, just like the other high schools have one on their site.
Well, like Jamestown does.
Like Jamestown.
War Hill doesn't have it.
War Hill has a double, they have a double gym.
But once we build an aux gym at Lafayette, there will still be Lafayette kids going to Whisk because they don't play field hockey in the gym and soccer and all that.
Sure, that's the fields, but for the gym use, I think it would be not equitable for us to have, you know, one high school with a double gym, another high school with an auxiliary gym, and then have Lafayette High School have to go or lay in a county somewhere. So I just don't think that's fair.
I would agree with you. I mean, regardless of whether they build one at Whisk or not, I mean, I think they need to do something at Lafayette, but there's still going to be kids traveling. There's still going to be kids on the road.
And some of the traveling would be diminished if we would just light the fields that we do have at Lafayette so that we could use them. I mean, you could have practices later. You could, and I have to say, I live close to Lafayette, and the band is, I mean, the fact that they use the car headlights for the band to practice late in the evening because there's no lighting is really sort of sad in a community that supports music as well as we do.
Yeah. And then you have to also get, I don't think other high schools have their football fields, their practice fields are lit either, so I don't think Jamestown is, I don't think War Hill is...
War Hill has lights at their ball fields because they're used in the evening by the rec programs.
I think they were paid for by the perks.
Is War Hill practice at Whisk, on the fields at Whisk?
No, they have a separate, they have a secondary practice field. The football field behind the school, when Julie and I toured...
You should go check it out.
Yeah, you should take a tour. When Julie and I toured it, what we learned is that the football field is really used by the soccer and field hockey people because it's better, and because the Cleveland people tear up the field, they use a secondary field that's on the side of the school for football practice.
Are both areas lit?
I know that the baseball and soccer fields and the tennis courts are lit. There's lights back there. And there's some lighting back at Jamestown, too.
For the softball and baseball fields, but not for the football fields.
So back to the demolition?
Yes.
Back to the demolition?
Back to the demolition.
But this is all, it's all sort of...
But this is all, it's all sort of related.
So, anyway. Demolition. Are we good with the demolition?
Yes.
Okay. Eight point zero four, invitation for bid, James River Elementary School roof replacement.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the next, next several items are normal, it's normal this time of school year to begin the process of awarding bids for the capital improvement projects that are in the 2016 budget, so I, I think Mr. Snipes is gonna be here for a while, and we'll start with the James River Elementary School roof replacement.
The James River Elementary School replacement is an existing shingle roof that was installed in 1993, and is no longer under warranty. Warranties for those roofs are usually 15 years, useful life is about 15 to 20. In the fall of 2014, the condition of the roof was assessed by an independent contractor, and that contractor stated, "Some areas of the roof have already begun to fail, and the roofing system should be replaced as soon as possible." This roof is extremely vulnerable to the continued repair costs if not replaced," and that was a direct quote from the contractor. The scope of work for this project includes removal and disposal of existing shingles and underlayment, replacement of the entire shingle roof system, with the exception of the gym, since the gym was done in 2007, with the slope membrane roof, removal of all mechanical and miscellaneous flashing, and installation of the new flashing. The invitation for bid was sent out on January 21st, and was due back on February 8th, which we did receive those. Again, this is a placeholder agenda item, and detailed vendor award information will be included in your April 19th, 2016 agenda item.
The, I think your, the item in here has the wrong number. What was the budgeted cost for the, for this?
The budgeted cost and the CIP was six hundred, $641,000.
Okay. Discussion?
I have a process question. So, it was, the request was issued in February, is that a typical length of, you know, to bring it, length of time to take it to us now, or is it just because when the work can start, you've been holding on to that? I'm just curious about the process, the length of the process.
We could have brought it to you earlier, after discussions with Dr. Constantino, we realized that we didn't need to bring it all at one, at separate times, we wanted to bring them all at one time and have that discussion, and this was more like the drop-dead date to do so.
Okay, so we're in drop-dead time. All right. And then also, I have a question, and I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, I forgot to bring it, but the, I'm just, was this sort of thing covered in the Faithful and Gould report? I, you know, the, is that the independent contractor to which you were referring?
No, the independent contractor, we, this, the Faithful and Gould report and the Facility Condition Index covers any items in the CIP from FY17 forward.
Okay.
This was in FY16, which we did what we call a mini systems condition index. The contractor that was, that did this, did not bid on this, on this award.
So, was this sort of thing included in the Faithful and Gould report? I'm sorry, I don't remember.
Sort, not, not this particular school, not the roof.
But from 17 forward, yes.
17 forward, yes.
Roof, HVAC, systems.
Okay, so you, I get it, okay.
It just didn't make the cut.
I got it.
So, none of these that we're talking about tonight were, were include, were included in that report?
No.
In the Faithful and Gould, but they will be henceforth?
The particular, specific schools were not for these items, and James River Roof is not included in the Faithful and Gould report. However, in the future, roofs, HVACs, refurbishments will be included.
Okay, thank you.
This was done before the, the process started for an FCI. But we did do a many, what we call a mini systems condition index, and that's where we had an independent contractor go out to review those areas that we were, had coming up in the CIP from last year, and coming into this year.
So, Marcel, is there, we have a, a school roof replacement scheduled, like, you know, replacing school buses scheduled, so we don't suddenly wake up, you know, it's, oh hell, we need, we need 10 new roofs.
Well, in the past, we had a roof replacement schedule based on the type of roof, whether it was a single ply membrane.
So, you knew what its expected life would be?
Right, but now, the Facility Condition Index has given us a guide to when we should be replacing those items.
Just, just as a general curiosity, why is it that we choose to use 15-year shingles and not 20- and 30-year shingles? What, and how many of our roofs, what percentage of our roofs are still membrane, flat roofs?
Well, most, most, flat roofs are over your cafeteria and gymnasiums, they usually don't do pitched metal or shingles. The, the roof systems are basically an architectural design, based on how much we have for budgeted for those things.
Right.
So, that has, that ranges over time, for example, Matthew Reilly has, you know, has slate. Yeah, so, there's, you know, that's a totally different roof than someone who has a single ply membrane, or a metal which is on here at James Blair. So, it's really, it's a cost that we, we cost out, and that is based on our budget.
How much, if, if we were to decide on the, on the slanted roofs not to do 15-year shingles, but really go to the metal roofs, which have a longer lifespan, how much would that add to the?
I will get that, I will get that answer for you, that's probably-
There was a time when our board was fairly active in saying that they wanted sloped metal roofs because of the longevity and the lack of leaking, because we know the flat roofs had created, well, at the time, had created a lot of problems at Lafayette with leakings and other schools. But, okay, and I, that's just a general information question, I have a problem with any of those roof replacement schedules.
Any other, any other questions about the roof at James River? James River, I apologize, I was, I was a, an item behind on my computer here, so you, it was my bad, not yours. Any other questions about the James River roof? Okay, keep going, Marcel. Speaking of roofs?
Speaking of roofs?
Another roof.
The, another roof that we were bringing to you tonight is for the Jamestown High School roof replacement. The existing shingle roof was installed in 1997, and again, has reached the end of its useful life, 15 to 20 years. The warranty expired in 2012, and this project, this project will replace the entire shingle roof. It will also remove and replace existing asphalt roofing and underlayments, it will remove and replace selective metal flashings and sealants, it will remove replacement of selective sealants, exterior insulation, and finish systems, and it will have a provision of low master retrofit roof deck assemblies. The invitation for bid, again, was set out on January 26th, and received back on February the 18th. If, the design for this project, if you recall, was for July 2014. However, the architect, once they went out and reviewed it, found some underlayment issues, and so now this has come, this is why it was not done last summer, we had to put it back in the CIP for the additional request for monies to do the underlayment. Again, this is a placeholder agenda item, and the detailed vendor, vendor and bid award information will be provided to you at the April 19th meeting.
Questions? The February bids are still good?
Yes.
Anything? Keep going.
Okay.
The next item, eight point zero six, is the invitation for bid for Claiberg Baker Elementary School refurbishment and security vestibule. The project was approved in fiscal year 2016 capital improvement plan. Claiberg Baker was last refurbished in 2001. The scope of work for this project includes replacement of floor finishes, paint and ceilings, and ceiling tiles, replacement and upgrade of interior lighting, installation of aluminum storefront system to provide a secure main entrance, a possible replacement of select plumbing fixtures, which is an add-alternate for this project, as well as the installation of LED lighting, which is also an add-alternate. An invitation for bid was sent out on March 18th, and was received, was received on April the 8th. This is a placeholder agenda item. Again, at the time this item was prepared, the bid opening had not been conducted, but the detailed vendor information will be provided at the April 19th meeting.
Okay.
So excited to get that entrance fixed, improved. How does this, how does this security vestibule improvement relate to all the, those security improvements that are in the CIP for the other schools? Is that?
How does it, what do you, what do you relate?
Yeah, I mean, like, is it the same, is, just, refresh my memory, was Claiberg Baker also one of the, in the CIP for security upgrades? But this is unrelated to this.
Claiberg Baker, all of our schools have security upgrades, and we, as CIP, as the committee and Dr. Constantino have discussed, incorporating those security entrances along with refurbishments, because that is an easier and more efficient time to do those things. So, each school that has a security need at the entrance, they are in the CIP.
So, there's not two line items for Claiberg Baker, then?
No.
So, this is the line item for Claiberg Baker that's in the CIP.
Right.
Okay, so how does this change the entrance to the school?
It's a very good question. We were gonna, we can bring that to you, the rendering and the kind of schematic at the next meeting, once we were seen, 'cause we had facility study done by Garen's Tingle when we were doing these. This also was, an architect also looked at this, so we can bring those schematics at the next meeting.
Good, thank you.
So, generally, what it does, though, is you, you come in through the door, routes you through the, to the office, and it leads you a little homey area.
Alan Robertson was involved, he can tell you about the flow and some of it.
Yeah. If you think of the more recent schools that we've built, and you look at the way it's a double-door system, like, think of Hornsby, when you come in and you've got a second door, and it can block you off, and in order to get through there to the school, you have to go into the office, it's a very similar kind of setup. When we asked the architects to look at all the different schools, of course, they had to design it differently based on what's there in the structure now. But Claiberg Baker, it's basically going through that door and setting up a second vestibule, so that then you will not be able to go to the right, the only thing they'll be able to do is turn and go into the office area until it buzzes through.
Any other questions about Claiberg Baker? Go ahead, Marcel.
All right. Eight point zero seven is the Claiberg Baker Elementary School roof replacement. Again, this project will replace the roof on the addition that was constructed in 1992. The roof is no longer under warranty as of 2007, and has reached the end of its useful life. This was, again, is a single membrane roof, which the useful life is about 20 to 25 years. So, but it's, it's, it's reaching the end of its useful life. The scope of work for this project will include removal of existing ballasted single ply roof system, installation of corresponding flashing, installation of a new membrane roof, and installation of new insulation and flashing. An invitation for bid was issued on January 29th, with a due date of February the 24th. Again, this is a placeholder agenda item, and the detailed vendor information will be provided at your April 19th meeting.
Ninety-three thousand is a lot of roof? Ninety-three thousand?
Is there a zero, Mr.?
No, that, that was, that was the budget for this. So, you gotta remember that roof, and, and we can bring a picture for the next meeting, that is for the addition, which is-
The 1902.
It's, it's not, it's not the entire roof, it's only the addition.
It's not a lot of roof?
It's not a lot of roof. We're running an area for your, at the next meeting, so you can see exactly where those are located.
Great. Okay, so, so the agenda, are you done yet?
Is that it?
He's good?
That's it? All right.
Thanks, Mr. Stowe.
Thank you, Marcel. Policies, nine point zero one, revision, recode, policy ILA testing programs.
These will go on unless otherwise decided here, go on consent, the next, just wanted to remind everybody, that's the process.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Constantino, tonight. The purpose of this agenda item is to propose the revision of our policy for testing programs, which is, is ILA, and we're seeking to revise the policy with updated language, and additionally, we'd like to recode this policy, because in VSBA, it's IL, and right now, we have it coded as ILA, so we'd like to mirror the VSBA policy. As you can see, we've got very small language changes to reflect our practice. Do you have any questions about this proposed revision?
Any, any questions? Nope.
Great, moving on then. So, we'd also like to propose the revision for policy IFA, which is educational research, and we'd like to revise the policy, again, with updated language. It was last revised in 2001, and we'd like to add a couple of words that, again, reflect our most current practice, and just as a note, there is no VSBA policy for education research.
Mr. Thorpe, can you just talk, tell the board why, if there's no VSBA policy, why this division in particular might benefit from having this policy?
Absolutely, we've got some standard practices in place to support the educational research that applicants want to, and want to do with research in our school division. We have many local universities that have students that want to do either masters or doctoral studies involving our school division. We have, we have a, a good policy, or, I'm sorry, a good procedure in place for applicants applying, and we have an academic review team that reviews all of the applications, and then, after it goes through that process, then we review them. So far this year, we've had 22 applications, and we have approved 16 of them.
So, maybe if we were in an area that didn't have a nearby university, this may not be necessary, but since we do, it seems to be something that's beneficial.
Do you kind of follow the same sort of IR standards that Women Mary has on, for doing human subject?
Yes. Okay. Any else? Are you GBCA, too? Policy GBCA, staff conflict of interest.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Constantino, I do have one policy to bring forward tonight, policy GBCA. We're proposing retiring this policy, is, the G policies are the HR, the personnel policies. Like Mr. Short said, we want to align with VSBA, there is no VSBA policy, GBCA. We're not proposing any changes with our current practice regarding this, we wanted to eliminate some duplication. This is covered in other areas, and it's actually covered in our regulations of DGCR, fiscal management, DJR, also titled fiscal management, and it's also covered under the Virginia Public Procurement Act. It's also, we trained our employees, the finance department did during purchasing training. This has been reviewed by the policy committee, and it was recommended by our attorney to delete this policy.
Okay, so we'll put these three policies on the consent agenda approval next week. That brings us to 10.01, board members' comments. Any board members have any comments they'd like to make? Ms. Young?
I know I'm beating a dead horse. But one of the things that I wanted to, one of the reasons I wanted to talk about 7.01 tonight was, the, the best outcome for James Blair would have been to repurpose it. That's not going to happen, obviously, this board has chosen to do other than that. The worst thing is to go ahead and build the school. There was another alternative, and I guess, as I'm listening to the concerns of Lafayette, and I, I share their concerns, and I hear many of us are sharing their concerns, I'm, I'm wondering if it wouldn't have been advisable to, to repurpose Lafayette as a middle school at some point, and instead build a high school that would have made, that would have given them the facility that they truly need for their theater productions, where they would have had the storage, and to give them the athletic facilities that they need to really, I mean, they're an outstanding school, they do very well with what they have. But I'm just thinking, as I, as I've visited at Lafayette, and as I've visited some of the other facilities, we, we are coming up where we are going to need more room, but I'm just wondering, was that ever a consideration of using Lafayette as a, as a middle school, and then building a, a new high school that would have accommodated the needs of our high school students? It seems to me that we haven't met that, and, and I, I mean, I think they do a remarkable job. I, my concern is not only for safety, but also for equity, and tonight, they, they talked about the acreage, and- about the acreage, and it seems like the facilities at Lafayette pretty much mirror the facilities here at James Blair, as far as space, as far as field size, and, but that's not what is really needed at a high school. So I just wanted to make that comment. But just, and then my other comment is, when we have, and maybe Mr. Kelly, you can give us some direction on this, but when we have these, our community members who come here and, and talk to us, and tell us what their concerns are, a lot of times, what happens, or what I've noticed happening, is that, that individual members of this board will take those concerns and, and fly with them. But would it, would it be advisable for us here at the end of our meetings to actually let the community somehow know that we are addressing those concerns, that either having you ask for volunteers to address them, or to do some research on them, or, I mean, it seems to me there would be a variety of ways, where even assigning us, you know, to go and, and do the research that would be necessary to answer those concerns. Because I, I feel like it would be much more transparent to our community if they could see what was actually be happening behind the scenes, because I think they, I think maybe they don't understand that we are doing things, and, and that we are trying to address the needs, but I think it would be helpful if somehow they knew that, that we as a board were actually concerned and interested in, in answering those concerns, because I do think that's one of the things that we could do a better job of.
Thank you. Any else?
Mr.? Doctor? Okay. That's all. In, in light of the comments made by Mr. Blatton, and the fact that we're gonna have some other speakers come in and deal with this next, next week, I'd like to ask the, actually, ask the chair, ask the superintendent, to bring a, a draft of a school naming policy to the board that will address not only how we name schools initially, but also how we rename schools, or what process is used. I know what's going on up in Fairfax County, it's been, it's gone on in Raco County, and I think, I know, I, I believe we have used protocols or guidelines, but I, I'm, I'm not sure if we ever had a fully articulated naming policy that would incorporate thoughts and views from, from a variety of, variety of people in our school community, but also contain pretty specific criteria that gets spelled out in the policy when it comes to naming schools. I think this would allow us to respond in a, really respond in a thoughtful way to citizens with concerns about the naming or renaming schools. I don't think, I, I would not want to do anything related to naming or renaming schools without having a, without having a policy, putting something together and so. I know it's another task, but I, I think it would be, it would be useful for us to spend some time, you know, looking at, you know, at something like that.
Okay.
That's all.
Speaking of policies, Mrs. Young and I forgot to mention that we're, we're aiming to bring you five, a meeting, and so we kind of undershot that target this time, so we're gonna have to make that up. Yay! So, yeah. But anyway, so we're, we're working on that, we're gonna try to, so, forgot to mention that. But I'd like to talk about Rawlsburg as well. I, I, I'm not sure, I'm intrigued by the idea of a policy, but because we name schools so infrequently, I'm not sure, and, and so arguably, the next, we, well, not, not with the fourth middle, but then the next one could be, you'd be, it'd be a totally different board, and you might be, and they might have to redo that policy, and, and you might be tying that board's hands. So I'm not sure, I think a policy's the, the way to go. But I, I am, I am wondering how, how best to proceed with this topic as a board, you know, because we need to know some things from the administration, like how much a renaming might cost, what a process would be, not as a, at the board level, but within a school, you know, because then you've got to read, you know, the school community has to be involved in mascot renaming, and what, I don't know, you know, I don't know. But kind of, and so, I don't, and then I don't know how to move forward with this group figuring out how to best access information that then could allow us to make a decision, you know, with solid information. Professor Allen, with the Lemon Project at College of William &amp; Mary, you know, seems, seems to have some thoughts on it, so I don't know if that would be a source for us to seek out and try to learn more about the topic, but I don't know, but I
I've actually spent some time on the topic. The first thing I did was get Rawlsburg's history of the Williamsburg James City County schools, which of course, has no information about his actions or inactions around
Right.
Bruton or teachers disparity in salary, equipment, and materials. But I do know that Dr. Allen and the Lemon Project have taken numerous oral histories throughout the locality, and certain Mr. Blatton and other friends of mine in the community were experienced that period of time with Mr. Bird. And as I shared with Doc, Ms. Cook earlier, it's rather ironic that one of the first integrated schools in Williamsburg James City County was named for the superintendent who was known for his segregationist attitude. So I thought in some ways that, but then we went on to name two other schools in an overreaction to naming Rawlsburg. I agree with Dr. Beers that we probably need to have a policy, and policy is there so that boards can't change things from win to win, and make it more difficult for them. There was a time when there was agreement on one board that the new schools would be named for location, which is why we have a James River, a Jamestown, a War Hill, a Matoka, and then, and Norge, and, yeah. And then we decided we would get back into naming. And the problem with naming, quite honestly, is that there's winners and losers in that, and it may not really reflect, we want our schools to be attached to a community, so perhaps it'd be better for Rawlsburg to be called Lake Laurel or Birchwood, because that's the communities that they there serve. Just as War Hill's community is attached to War Hill, because that's the community they serve. But I do think, I do think that we have to, I, I agree with you that we have to have some information, and certainly contacting Dr. Allen for some of those oral histories would be helpful. And I do believe the group coming next week is gonna share some of those oral histories and experience. But, but enough said on that particular topic.
Can I just add to that?
Yeah.
I'm not, I understand what, what he was talking about. However, are there gonna be opposing views in what is presented? Is somebody else going to come and present the opposing view? I mean, perhaps. My, my problem with renaming schools is, like you said, there are winners and losers, but I think in order to make a just decision, we need to hear from both sides of the story, and it, I don't, I don't want to just hear one side. I would like to hear other people that lived in the community, maybe from that period of time. And not that I don't think there were injustices, I do, but I would still like to hear other people, if they have their point of view.
Ms. Cook, you're taking a long time.
I have one more thing.
You know, I get, let me, let me just add one other thing, is a great, no, well, a lot of, a lot of school districts in Virginia do have a policy, and they're actually, they're going through the process of rewriting their policies as they try to deal with the whole issue of renaming schools. And so I, you know, it's not, I don't, it's not gonna be an easy, now, I'm surprised of such, you honor the standard operating procedures to the letter, the period, that, I care, I thought you would really like to see a, a written policy with criteria. That's all. That's it, I'm done.
Well, Ms. Cook hasn't finished yet.
Yeah, I, I just, I just wanted to speak a, a little bit about the, both the CIP budget request and the operational budget request, and just to say that, you know, it is my plan to advocate for the requests that we adopted, and, and, and do that with both the county and the city, including the auxiliary gym. And so, and I think that's the next course of action, the most appropriate course of action. I'm not, I think, you know, advocating for what we adopted, rather than trying to, you know, creatively approach alternate ideas is, is really the, the way to go. You know, when the CIP request was presented to this board, the administration did not include the auxiliary gym, and that was, that was changed at the request of the board, and that auxiliary gym was, was pulled out, I mean, put in, and something else was pulled out, for good reason and with logic. The James City County administration has, has essentially done the same thing. It's understandable, but it's also, I think, our job to, to advocate for what our request is, and so that's, that's what I, I plan to do, and I hope that the Board of Supervisors will consider that seriously, and, and the, the oxygen can, can be part of the adopted budget, but I just wanted to say that.
Julie?
I have five, five pages, no, I'm just kidding.
You can't take as long as Kira did.
I'm not gonna take as long.
So, loving Kira.
I, I am going to also urge support of our current CIP. So the board adopted a CIP, then the Planning Commission accepted that and moved the auxiliary gym portion of the CIP up, and so I am also of the opinion, with Pira and Sandra, and I think a lot of others here, that we shouldn't give up on the, the funding of this, of the auxiliary gym and the current CIP. We should advocate for that with the county Board of Supervisors, and I would maybe perhaps ask the community to let their views be known to the Board of Supervisors via emails and phone calls to, to, or, or a petition, just a simple petition that would say something like, there's 500 people that would like you to support the CIP that was put in place by the school board, and, and, you know, put in place by the Planning Commission, and let's, let's not give up on that. That's what I would like to say. Now, as far as building 900 at Lafayette High School, in March and April, I toured Lafayette, I talked to staff there to find out more about the usage of that building. I talked to the CDR folks, and the Learning Lab, and the GED programs, and the bottom line, in my opinion, from those, those tours, is that all of these programs are doing great things in our community. CDR is providing a critical service to children with special needs from birth to three years old, and the Learning Lab and the GED, GED programs are also providing a key resource to students who need alternatives to traditional learning. I'm gonna direct this to our chairman. I would like to request that the school board undertake a long-term plan for space utilization at Lafayette's Building 900, to make sure that it is optimally serving the needs of our high school students, especially in relation to the priorities and the goals of our school system. On our website and our strategic plan, our number one priority is high student achievement for 21st century success, with the following goals for the school system: to ensure that student, that students progress in mastering 21st century skills, to employ flexible learning resources, particularly using new technology to accommodate varied learning styles, and to encourage and celebrate innovation and excellence that inspires more creativity and depth in teaching. I would like to make sure that when we look at the success of some of the innovative programs, like Project Lead the Way at War Hill, that we make sure there's ample space for students at Lafayette, and students at Jamestown as well, to be able to accommodate the unique technology demands of programs like this, to move us forward, and it's not to take away from the other programs that are building 900, but I would like to know if we can have kind of a long-term plan for addressing the future enrichment needs of students at Lafayette High School. That's, that's a request to you. I did want to mention that I met with Stephanie Bourgeot, Bourgeot, and Neve, and Ben Swinson about the Learning Lab and the GED programs. I am very, very impressed with everything they're doing with the pilot Learning Lab, and the efforts of the school system to work with students, to make them thrive in a non-traditional way. And I, I don't want to take anything away from the efforts of that program one bit. I really look forward to seeing the results of the pilot program, and hearing about the success. And then finally, I wanted to say that I went to Jamestown High School's Footloose, and it was fabulous. The musical has some very, very difficult lyrics and songs to sing, and the students knocked it out of the ballpark. I want to say that although many of us go to spring musicals just for the entertainment, that, and, a high school spring musical is one of the most collaborative efforts that a high school can undertake. It is a fun example of project-based learning. Students have to work together to learn scripts, they have to learn to figure out choreography. We have students that have to design and build sets, other students are playing in a pit band.
Yeah, I love it, it was awesome.
Other students are working in a crew with lighting and moving sets, and through this process, our students are learning skills in leadership, teamwork, collaboration, communication, and time management. And I just think, the next time you spend your $10, and everyone should spend their $10 to, to watch all of our spring musicals, look at it as a collaborative learning experience in addition to fun entertainment.
Well said.
So I'll keep mine short and sweet, as I like to do.
Yeah, probably take, I, I take her time.
Yes, I yield my time to you, even though I'm not supposed to do that.
Don't get anybody any ideas, we can do it.
So during our time from the last meeting, myself and Ms. Minor went to visit a couple of schools. We went to Tuano Middle and Lafayette to do a tour, and it was great, getting to go into the classroom and observe what's going on and all the hard work that our students are doing in the county. I was also able to see the art program, and hear the art program at Tuano Middle as well, and that was a great opportunity.
Let me just echo what, what Ms. Hummel said, and other board members have said about the Footloose production was incredible, and I just know all of the work that staff and students do together for an extended period of time to put on these high-quality productions is truly amazing. And as Ms. Taylor pointed out, we had an opportunity to tour both Lafayette and Tuano, and I want to thank those principals, Ms. Swinton and Ms. Jones for their, to see that. I also toured Hornsby Middle School and War Hill with Ms. Hummel. And so what I've, what I've learned is that, really thank you to Ms. Ellison and Ms. Jones for taking the time to show their respective programs and their schools, but it is evident that technology is being used in instruction in very different ways, in very different classrooms, and across the, across the middle schools. It's also clear that there are some challenges in buildings that were built in 19, 25 years ago, when it comes to things like outlets, and, and courts, so I don't, I, I think that that's a constructional thing that I'd like to see the design, in the design of the new middle school, the new Blair. It was clear to us that we have foreign language teachers on carts and working part-time to fulfill the needs of our students at the middle and high school, so I'd like to thank everybody who's involved in seeing that we can meet those needs. But also thanking to Mr. S, Ms. Dr. Carol, and Mr. Mullen, and Ms. Swinton for the tours of the schools. Project Lead the Way is really a model for career and technical education. It would be my hope that there was ways to have other students enter that program, and to encourage our young ladies to participate in that program, because as we walked through, there were few, if any, to be found. That was also true with our tour at Lafayette and the technology programs. But I have to say that their staffs are making the best use of the facilities and doing some really good things. Mrs. Swinton, I have to say, has shown her concern and flexibility in meeting the diverse needs of the students in her building. She houses the Newcomers Academy, which is our foreign language effort with secondary school, and they meet there in the morning through two periods, and go walk back to their home schools, or we push in the teachers there at Lafayette. She has the, the She has the Learning Lab. She also works with the multilab handicap and autistic classrooms. In fact, I'd like to understand what, how we're using special ed spaces in all our schools now because I know that is driving some of our costs and our experience for both space and classroom space. We saw that when we toured both Tuano and I saw that when I toured Lafayette as well as Hornsby. So, but in the next few weeks, don't feel neglected, I will be going to Jamestown and to Berkeley to see how things are going there. But I really have to say, our staff does some amazing things with making the best use of all the resources they have to meet the needs of our students. So, I appreciate that.
I'll just pony off of Footloose there that I was, what I was most impressed with in Footloose and in Jamestown's production, as opposed to some of the prior productions, is the diversity of the student body and the cast of that. And that there were many students that had solos and, you know, it's not like they found one kid that could sing and just keep going, you know, and you keep hearing that kid. I thought that they, you know, and I wasn't, I wasn't a theater guy, I didn't play in the band, but, you know, the teamwork involved in putting on those productions is just amazing to me and, you know, the investment that those kids have. I also was fortunate enough to see a preview of Lafayette's Wizard of Oz at Dancing with the Williamsburg Stars. And they did, the preview is sure to tell you that it's going to be an amazing show. So, I'm looking forward to go and see, going to see the Wizard of Oz. And War Hill's is later, War Hill's is in the middle of May, I think. So, it's, for those in the community, if you have not been to one of our spring, one of the spring musicals in our, in our system, it's the best ten bucks you'll ever spend. It's pretty, they're pretty amazing. Getting into some of the other things that were, that were talked about tonight, you know, concerns over speaker comments and also really the building 900 at Lafayette. You know, it's important that the board looks and makes sure that we understand our role versus the administration's role. You know, we have tasks, we tasked the administration to provide educational programming. They utilize our facilities applied to provide that to the best of their ability to what they're funded and to what the demands of the students are and to make sure that those offerings are there. So, I think that they've heard the concerns about Lafayette and Building 900 and how those are, how those are, you know, and I know they're in the process of looking at what's out there and what's at Lafayette and just making sure that that fits what the needs of our students today as compared to when those decisions were made, for instance, to put CDR back there and to utilize, you know, GED programs. And those are very important educational programs for our entire student body. So, those, you know, we have to, we have to trust in the administration that they, that they, that they do that. Likewise, with, you know, with the student, with the citizen comments, when, you know, citizens come to us and talk, when we discuss that upward matters, that is acknowledging their, their issues and their concerns and making sure that those are acknowledged. And where appropriate, we task the administration to look at those. We have to, we also have to, as a governing body, we have to, we have to also meter how much we task our administration and our staff because we are, we are not chock-a-block there. We are very thin at the administration, so we have to really make sure we prioritize what we ask them to do and where they go. I think we've talked about the aux gym at Lafayette. I don't know, so we've talked about it enough, but we've talked about it a lot. I think we all support the aux gym at Lafayette. We understand the needs there. We would certainly hope that the, that the county would see to it to fund that. But I would like to, assuming that, you know, to kind of keep pushing that ball down the road if we can, if we can, you know, look at getting some operating funds to do some engineering to make sure that we have the right number, that we're asking for the right, for the right number. I'm not sure how much money the, an engineering firm would look, would look to have, but I think that's something that we should consider doing and, you know, keep making sure that we march that ball down the road. You're taking my time now.
I want to clarify what you just asked.
Yep.
Engineering, are you looking for architectural design?
Preliminary stuff, just to kind of get a vision of where it's going to go, what size it's going to be, how much square footage, how tall it's going to be.
Okay.
You know, and go figure out how much that is and then see if we've got it. So, I'm not, I'm not telling you to go off and do, I'm telling you to see what it would take to go off and do. But, you know, that's, that's, that's obviously a large need and I would like to see that as soon as possible in our, funded in our CIP. There was a speaker that talked about SOLs tonight. The General Assembly has taken steps to reduce the number of SOLs. I think we would all tell you that we would like to see them reduce that number even further. I think the, I think there's some, with the new, the new educational, educational law that came out of Congress, I think there's going to take, it's going to take a little bit of pressure off of SOLs and the requirement necessarily to do that. It's going to be slow-going to get those, to get those evaluated, but some of the, some of the federal laws is going to allow us to do a little bit more of that, not us, the General Assemblies and the individual states and commonwealth. So, that's working. The name of the school of Rawlsburg, Dr., Mr. Blayton's, I think it's Mr. Blayton, Mr. Blayton's letter today really did kind of give me pause and really kind of made me think about the naming of our schools. And so, you know, I looked at, we have, we have six schools that are named after geographical areas, Jamestown, War Hill, Tuano, Stonehouse, Norge, James River, and then 10 that are named after people. Five of them are historical figures dating back to the Revolution and before. Five more are more recent history. You know, the Rawlsburg opened in 1965, it's been around for 51 years as Rawlsburg and, you know, it's, it's something we don't want, we don't, if we're going to make action, we don't want to jump into it. I think we want to take this slowly. I wanted those folks who are, who are advocating to change the name, just understand that we're going to take this slowly that, as we, as we consider this and make sure we understand, you know, when you, when you name, there's some, there's some that think that we should name it for, I name all of our schools for geographical areas, geographical places. I don't know how I feel about that. I don't want all our schools named Pine Forest and the Scruffy Shrub. I mean, I like, I like, when you name a school, I mean, it kind of talks about the character of the community and, and where the community comes from. But when you name it after people, people are valuable. You know, the founding fathers, particularly those in Virginia, had a checkered history with slave ownership and, you know, so there's, there's a risk that you, that you take when you name it after, name it after a person. Also, when you look at, when you look at, you know, the history, when you have someone who's on that precipice of history where there's a sea change in the culture getting ready to happen, you know, judging them in the context of today versus where they were. I mean, there was a reason why the school board in 1965 decided to name it Rawlsburg. And, you know, he's not perfect, none of them are perfect. And so, I really want to make sure that we're, that as we go through this process, that we're looking at, you know, the total contributions of the folks that we name our schools for. That said, there are, there are some things that are beyond that. So, it's, we really need to make sure, make sure that we are, we are doing this in a slow, considered, and getting there. I hope that, I hope that kind of makes sense, that we, that we really need to, really need to make sure that we're doing this in a thoughtful way. This is not something that we're going to have happen by the end of May. It's going to, it's going to take some time. So, I just hope you all understand that. And I'm not sure if a draft policy is what we're looking for or if there's, if there's, if there's some protocols out there that other schools, other systems have used for how they, how they, how they have named their schools or if there's some guidance out there that, you know, that we can, that we can look at. I think that would be, you know, something for us to consider. I hear both my left and my right's points about policy and, and I understand that.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
That's, that's the primary responsibility of the school board, is develop policy. Am I incorrect there?
No, you're not incorrect.
Okay.
So, so, enough about that. We'll get there. But it's just something, you know, we need to, we need to understand, you know, we might get to a policy eventually, but what's out there, what do the people, what do people do? How do they, other school systems, you know, name their schools? And if they have policies, it was certainly something for us to evaluate and make sure that we follow or we understand that as we, as we go down there. Of course, we're not, the next school that we're going to name, new school that we're going to name is an elementary school 10 years down the road, eight to 10 years down the road. So, yeah, I understand that.
That can go through policy committee.
Yeah, that's where I think we could start.
Okay. Yeah, something for the policy committee to look at. I like the work session format here and the way that we're sitting across the table from each other. I think that's, I think that's all, I think that's, I think that's a step forward and a step in the right direction. So, as we, as we look at some of these issues that are before us, that people are certainly passionate about, the renaming of Rawlsburg, building the middle school, some of Lafayette things, I would, I would just encourage the community and the board to make sure, to make sure this debate and this discussion does not get visceral, that it's not personal. You know, the seven of us are up here trying to represent the community, trying to make the best decisions that we know, that we know how in the interest of kids. And there's a lot of things that are pulling on us that make us go in different directions. So, we want to do the right thing, which we vote, how we vote, because we believe it's the right thing. There's nothing personal about that, whether you're for or against middle school, whether you're, whether, you know, renaming the school. You know, let's make sure we step, let's try to step back from the tenor of today's politics and have honest and good discussions about these types of things and not let's get into a name-calling and finger-pointing contest. So, I think I took enough time.
Excuse me. There was one other. I participated in the strategic planning meeting with the James City County and one of the things I learned, I shared it with Dr. Constantino, but not the rest of the board, is that the demographics are certainly, for the respondents, are certainly shifted to people over 50. So, if there is any way to encourage our school-aged parents and citizens and young people to go online to the Williamsburg, to the James City County Strategic Plan to give their input, it would be really helpful because it's clear that that demographic is driving a lot of the conversation and input around the strategic plan. Just so it, while we know we're aging, we have some aging going on in the community, we also want to be, continue to be family-friendly and we have some great recreation programs and we have wonderful schools. So, I'd like to see that those are an important part of the conversation and the goal-setting.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you for going.
So, that brings us to 11 meetings and event schedules. 11.01 upcoming events, things where you're likely to see your school board members at. Most Likely to Succeed Documentary tomorrow at the Wilmer's School of Ed at 6:00. There's a CAC meeting on Thursday at 6:30 at the Community Center. School Board's going on a retreat, the Virginia School Board Association offices in Charlottesville on All Day Friday. Policy Committee is meeting April 19th at 1:30 in James Blair. CTE Committee meets at 4:00 on April 20th here at James Blair. There's a VSB A Hot Topics Conference. I'm not sure what the hot topic is this time.
That, just coming to talk about some of the programs.
Yeah.
April 26th at the Holiday Inn in Charlottesville. Student Advisory Committee at Lafayette on the 27th of April at 3:00. Teacher of the Year Ceremony on April 27th at 5:15 at the School of Ed. Lafayette's production is somewhere in the 22nd range, I believe.
21st, 22nd, 23rd.
It's my first, 22nd, 23rd.
There you go. And that's well worth the price of admission. If we don't have anything to do after that, on next Tuesday, April 19th at 6:00, we are a closed session here in the work session, not here, I'm sorry, the county complex, Building F at 6:00, followed by a regular meeting at 6:30 in the boardroom at the county in Building F. We have a joint budget meeting with the city council and the Board of Supervisors on April 22nd at 9:00 at Stryker Building. And then we have a closed session on May 10th here at James Blair at 6:00, followed by a work session, act items at 6:30 here in Room 400 at James Blair. You guys are earning your pay this time. Set the, set the board agenda for next week. And thank you all for your, for your work and your efforts and for those of you who went to the conferences past week, this past weekend, I think that was a great conference. Appreciate your attendance and your act and your work. With that, we are adjourned.